Take less to lead the charge here.
Okay.
Okay, we're starting with that discussion of Chapel Crossing. Joined with Bob Kirkwood, Chair of the Planning Board, and Les Diamond, Special Counsel of the Planning Board. The Chapel Crossing, it's a really charting hope. Town Planner. Take the way.
Okay. Sure. Do you want to start?
No, I think let's go with the memo.
Yeah, so last week you received a memo from myself, David, September 13th, which outlined a host of issues that it turns out in relation to the petition you received this past weekend, really outlined the changes that will need to be made and where those changes will need to be made regarding legislation in either the our, the business retail overlay, business retail office park zoning or the multifamily planned development, the overlay protection retail development. There are several different zoning changes that will need to be implemented in order to process the East Village application as is currently before the Planning Board for approval. So I can go through, there's really nine areas in my memo. The first are amendments to the BRO 20 lot and bulk regulations. If you recall, with the Kupla building, the 200 building, when the town approved all residential in that building, it was intended that that building would be standalone from the office park. Previously to instituting residential in that building, it was considered office use. As part of the management of the Chapel Crossing site, they are looking at separately subdividing that building away from the office portions of that building, separate and apart from the commercial uses of the site as well as the auditorium and the East Village site. So this will require, because in the business retail office park zoning district, that building is zoned within that zoning district. The size of the lot does not meet the size requirements within that zoning district. So it is not 20 acres, which is the minimum size requirement in that zoning district. It is .75 acres. So that is a legislative change that will need to be made within the zoning code in order to allow that building to be standalone as a property. The second, and please Bob at any point, Les.
All I can say is, you know, obviously the Planning Board supports the petition on that regard. We have no problems with that.
And then the context is that all of these changes to the various districts will ultimately allow the Planning Board to consider the master subdivision for the site. So that's why these are prerequisites to that happen.
We've had a discussion about this.
But we can't take action until you make these.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah, but you have, you're gonna have to take a formal process.
Is um. The line of stuff you have.
Yeah.
So the last.
So we have not, we have not taken any formal action on any of these items yet.
No.
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 Right, right.
In fact, that's the draft petition.
Yeah.
When it's submitted in final form, we'll initiate that process for the board.
Right, one of the attachments in my, in my submission to you last week was the, was the legal steps for approval. That really helps outline for you the steps that need to be taken to adopt these changes, the public hearings that need to be made and the time that we're gonna need to look at in order to properly process the requests that have been made. And the Planning Board can't take action on their subdivision or the East Village site plan until the town board processes their amendments. Okay, so there's temporal issues here.
Um, just out of curiosity, can you just say how that subdivision works? Like is there, is there actually gonna be a building next to the 200 building that's knocked down? So it's actually standalone or is it just gonna be a line kind of drawn through the buildings?
There's gonna be a line, there's gonna be a line drawn through. There was discussions at one point of taking off a portion of the 300 building.
Right. Yeah.
I'm not sure where they stand right now, you know, to completely separate it. If not, you can draw a property line through the edge of one building the way that that building is furnished and call that the property line.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so yeah. The second point in my memo is regarding amendments to the Office Park Retail Overlay District or the O prod. This is really to align the boundary as a, there's a boundary that exists right now. It needs to be realigned based on the layout of parking that has been implemented in the retail portion of the site. And so the, just the line work does not match for the district. So that is a slight adjustment based on what was actually constructed. The third amendment is really regarding the Office Park Retail Overlay District floor areas. There was a provision in the zoning code regarding not counting the floor area of the affordable housing units in the Kupla building. The definition of how you would calculate the office park floor areas excluded the floor area of affordable units. We did not exclude the area of the 28 affordable, affordable units in the Kupla building. So this is an adjustment to remove that floor area accumulation from those affordable units from the 500,000 square feet of office use. So this is an amendment that will take those, that floor area out. Okay, and again, this is just balancing the numbers. And if you recall, the affordable units in the Kupla building come from removing the affordable requirements within the East Village site plan.
Who would never contemplate that the affordability would be part of the office use?
Right.
Right.
So we're just moving it from one location to another as well.
Correct. Correct.
If you will, it's, it's almost administrative at this point.
Yeah, that, that is really administrative.
So the Planning Board's okay with that as well?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The fourth is an amendment to the boundary of the multifamily planned development concept plan. Right now, when the town board adopted the preliminary development concept plan, there were boundaries that were set. There's a request for boundary changes as the Planning Board is reviewing the East Village. The, it was initially reflected as 30.5 acres, the boundary of the area for the East Village. Due to the planning that's been going on, there's a request that the Planning Board is being, is considering, or being asked to consider to increase that area of the East Village to 32 acres. And this would need to be reflected as a change on the town zoning map.
What does that mean disturbance for an extra one and a half acres? Or is this also just more of an administrative change? What is, what does that mean 1.5 acres in a practical sense?
This is a, this is tied to the actual development proposal that the Planning Board is considering. It is not an administrative change.
Right.
Okay, so like what does that mean?
It's a structural change.
This is, this is a change in what the applicant is proposing in terms of development. So I don't know arithmetically where the 1.5 acres is coming from, right? Is it coming out of the public open space? Is it coming out of the retail?
I don't know.
So it's coming out of something else and it's, it's being asked for to give them more flexibility for the development.
I can, and I can tell you, give you an example.
It's not administrative though.
A portion, a portion, like a percentage of this, if we were to look at different percentages, we don't have all of them, but I can tell you the boundary movements on the auditorium are affecting this as well. Okay, so when we ask to be expand on the east side of the auditorium or the west side of the auditorium, that is affecting the land area within the East Village. The size of buildings, the width of roadways, that all affects the land area of the East Village.
Well, that goes to one of the issues that I think we read later on about changing the width of the roadways and changing the size of the driveways.
Yes. Yes.
So some of it maybe you think is good, some you think is bad. I, in the end, ask the apples to apples. Chap pack, the auditorium is changing that point oh two or point three or point four. Does that equate to 1.5? And then to that 1.5, is that, you know, is that, is that paved 1.5? Is that building 1.5? I just want to know what that means in a practical sense.
Well, it may not be, it may not be really something you can grab one month on.
Quotifying.
But what happens is sort of an accordion. So as we move some of those lines around, it's not all perfect land. So it may impact us and put us more into some wetland areas. It may change the stormwater drainage. So they may need more land because we pushed out, you know, better land for use for the auditorium. So it's, it's, again, there's a lot of different factors that come into play. I don't think there's any one that you can say, aha, it's because the driveways are X length. Or it's because all of the buildings have increased their footprint. I mean, these are all factors that are part of it. And I think it's something that you really need to understand. It goes to the, and I think Supreme will talk about this, the net increase in development that's being asked for compared to what was previously approved on a preliminary basis.
And I think to answer your question, the petition should address that.
We need to quantify and identify.
Yes, and that should, should answer the question, yes.
Okay.
But at the end of the day, this is, I mean, if I understand it correctly, the applicant's been working with the Planning Board, they've been tweaking the plans, making it better. Obviously, you know, the goal is to make it better. And at the end of the day, after they've made it what they perceive as better, they have to make sure that everything is consistent. So by making it better, they want to change the boundaries.
I think the goal is just to figure out better for whom.
And more importantly, more importantly, we can't take action on it until or unless you approve that.
Right, because, because the existing, the existing codes, the existing legislation says it should only be 30.5 acres. The Planning Board cannot approve a project that outlines 32.0 acres without them changing.
The point is if we're not gonna prove it, then it's basically go back to the Planning, thank you Planning Board for all your work.
Well, thank the applicant too, by the way.
Go back to the Troy, go back to the Troy Board because.
Thank you applicant for all your work.
Most importantly, thank you applicant.
Right, right. But also you guys are the ones working with them and tweaking it and making it like, say do this and do that.
So, so number five in my review memo is in regard to amendments in the multifamily planned development preliminary development concept plan regarding the number of additional bedrooms in the Kupla building. And five and six, I broke out into two different categories. There's really only one bedroom count in the town code or in the MFPD, PDCP. I broke it out into two different issues because one is kind of a miss that the town, town staff, town council, the applicant, when we were approving the housing for the Kupla building, we did not worry about bedrooms. We were looking at number of units, square footage, how does it work within the building? We didn't count bedrooms, we didn't compare it to at that time the bedroom count threshold in, in the legislation. Okay, so when looking at what was the overall approved bedrooms based on East Village and the Kupla building, we needed to add additional bedrooms when we introduced workforce housing and market rate housing in the Kupla building. And that total was 11 bedrooms. So we have 11 more bedrooms within the Kupla building that we did not anticipate or include when we were approving legislation to allow the additional housing in the Kupla building. Item six is in regards to the applicant's request for nine additional bedrooms within the East Village townhome development. They have adjusted the number of two bedroom and three bedroom units. They have increased the number of three bedroom units and are now asking for nine additional bedroom, bedrooms. That is a consideration for the town board to make in amending the MFPD, PDCP.
So my, my question as to that is, are you not really, tell me if I'm wrong comparing apples to apples, meaning we give them nine because they lost 11. In other words, I want the 11 additional and you're sub, and we're looking at five. Because asking 11 bedrooms should be added to the 294 bedrooms. But at the time that this agreement was made to do this in the Kupla building, was there an advantage or benefit to the developer to put those units there as opposed to elsewhere?
There's no relationship, in my opinion, there is no relationship between the number of bedrooms in the, the additional bedrooms being requested in the MFPD and what the town needs to do to correct the inaccuracies within the Kupla building. The town had asked the developer to include affordable and, or to include market rate and workforce housing in the Kupla building. We asked, they, we created a three floor residential development within that structure. We took the affordable number of bedrooms from the East Village and we moved them to the Kupla building. The 11 that we're talking about within the Kupla building are because the town asked them to fill that with other bedrooms.
So the benefit of being that it was moved from the East Village.
It wasn't a detriment to the East Village.
I, I think it could be viewed as a benefit in terms of the town meeting the responsibilities of the county's settlement. Because you integrated units with workforce, with market rate in a single building. The original plans for the East Village had kind of the units somewhat segregated and this kind of eliminated that.
But I think all that moved into the Kupla building from this, the residential plan was the affordables, right?
Correct.
And then we asked them to also incorporate workforce and market rate to make it an inclusive building.
Right, right.
Right, so.
So all that was transferred was the 11. So like if they were asking to add those back, then you're double counting, but they're not.
The, the site contained 294 bedrooms for the site. When the, when the MFPD, PDCP was initially approved, there was no housing in the Kupla building. All of those bedrooms were to be located in the East Village. The town moved the 11 bedrooms for the, or moved the, that portion of the 294 bedrooms to the Kupla building. We then asked for additional bedrooms, the 11 bedrooms for the Kupla building. The same number of bedrooms, if we were to do that back in 2015 when we approved that, the applicant today would still be asking for nine additional bedrooms for the East Village.
Right, so number five is really very administrative because it's just buttoning up what we've done. It's already there and we wanted it to be there, so there's really no controversy there. The issue for you is really number six. And that is whether or not you are okay with the additional nine bedroom units that the applicant is asking for.
Are you okay with this? I mean, is this part of the site plan that you're developing as far as?
Yes, yes, so we've looked at it and I think it's fair to say that the polling of, of the Planning Board is we don't have a problem with the nine additional units. We've gone through this extensively with the applicant. And if you were going to ask us for a recommendation, is it okay? We're okay with it. We, don't forget, a lot of this in the very beginning was school centric. The concern was the school population. I think that population issue is no longer as acute, if it's even exists. And I think we've asked the applicant to check with the school folks and they have over the years that we've been doing this. So again, it does not appear to be an issue. That was, I think, the main issue for the, the numbers that were set.
The two issues I had, the questions I had were, that was one of them. But the response I saw in here was that the Newcastle School District, Chapel, pardon me, was down 10%. What, it doesn't matter what's going on in West Orchard. It matters what's going on at Grafflin. So has anyone looked at the numbers at Grafflin? Is it down 12%? Is it up 2%?
We actually did the numbers, I think it was, was it two children?
10%?
I think I remember.
No, 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 Mr. Well, assuming that you own three children and moved in an extra nine bedrooms, but that aside, my question is, there's statistics we saw that was down 10% of the school population from what it was before. Am I mistaken? Is that what was 10%?
I don't know what the latest numbers are, but I've seen figures.
Ten to twelve.
Yeah, so my question was, that's, that's district wide. I'm curious as to what it is in Grafflin.
I don't know.
Because that's where it would be relevant, at least initially in Grafflin.
Yes.
That's where the kids are going to school.
I don't know if we have that statistic, but I know that we did ask and I think based on studies, it was single digits in terms of the number of students that you could anticipate from these nine extra bedrooms.
Yeah, I think.
These are not nine separate new units, they're just adding, you know,
Right, it's nine.
On the margin, nine bedrooms in this whole 91 unit thing.
Right, I think, I think the numbers were 14 or 15 children plus an additional, that were, or 14 were approved and looked at as part of the review of the impacts of the East Village. These additional bedrooms added, I think, two or three additional to that 14.
I mean, that's a model, a study, it could be five, it could be six, but it seems to be.
It's 9.
It was de minimis.
So, and that is inclusive or separate from actually expanding the basement and having the basement.
Different issue.
Right, but the arm and not, because you're expanding the potential footprint of the building by 380 some odd feet. If that doesn't include the basement, is that expanding another thousand feet? And it is different, but it's the same because you're competing now, just more units compete with three bedroom units, which are a lot of two bedroom homes in Newcastle. And this is now gonna be a beautiful, great, we want it to succeed, make no mistake, because that success helps us collectively, but it's adding stock to an already depressed market.
Like I told Talat, the thing, if you speak to the real estate brokers, the million dollar market's really not depressed in Newcastle.
Is what?
The million dollar market is not depressed at all in Newcastle. I mean, that's not my opinion, it's, I speak to the brokers all the time.
It's just adding, you're adding more stock.
There's actually getting more.
Let's, let's, I have a correction, it's 40 children.
Yeah, the originally approved plan identified for 40 school age children
Was 40. Not 14.
And this would increase that to 43.
But actually, every town goes, you know, we talk about this rezoning downtown Chapel. And we're gonna make it, you know, increase the vitality and things like that. Here's a little secret though, kids are gonna come. Like when you're in housing, you're dealing with kids. So as a town, at some point you have to decide if you're gonna have, make, you know, increase the housing stock to make more diverse housing and to basically make your downtowns, you know, more, more vibrant, you're, you're gonna get kids.
But moving on to a different issue, the issue I'm speaking to now is not three or five children. The issue I'm speaking to now is that's nine more units that are going to compete with nine other houses that are already on the potential market, or the three bedroom homes. No one's buying a two bedroom home really for the most part. For three bedroom, there's a lot of three bedroom homes in Newcastle.
So, so let me, let me just focus you. 71 two bedroom units and 23 bedrooms were, three bedroom units were initially approved. Now the applicant is looking at 62 two bedroom units and 29 three bedroom units. So those nine additional bedrooms and some changes in the numbers regarding the, the difference between two bedroom and three bedroom, they are looking at 62 two bedroom units and 29 three bedroom units.
So I saw in here, there was a discussion about sort of what the market realities are that are driving this request. And I guess when you talk about moving from two bedrooms to three bedrooms, the question then is, are we no longer serving kind of an empty nest population and thinking more about the young family population that would have school age children? So are we, are we shifting the dynamic of who we're potentially building for? Did we have any discussion about kind of what those market realities were?
Well, it's interesting because, and we'll get into this one and talk about the science of this as well. We've asked the applicant a number of times to share whatever they could. I mean, some of this might be proprietary, but to share market information and they just, you know, repeatedly told us, this is what the market is, this is what the market is, this is what it tells us. We haven't seen anything objectively that we can actually look at, not that we're necessarily, you know, political economists that have been, you know, making the sense of ourselves.
You're not?
Uh, well, we can fake it, of course, as we do with most of our things. But it's, you know, it's, some of it is proprietary. So they've done their market study. I mean, to a certain extent, my view is they're the applicant, they know their business. At some point you have to defer to them to the extent that it doesn't impact, you know, the town adversely. And again, our position on this is that, again, we, we looked at this a lot. We've asked about the economics, but we didn't think that it was a material difference. And, and I think also it's fair to say that due to market conditions, the target market has also been dynamic and has changed. It's not empty nesters, it's really a mix that they're looking for. I think it's professionals, young professionals, it's young families, it's empty nesters, it's people wanna downsize. It's gonna be a mix. And, and, you know, I, I don't think it's as, you know, as eccentric in, in one direction as it was initially.
I mean, if I was gonna downsize personally, I don't think I'd be moving into a two bedroom. I think I'd be moving into a three bedroom. I mean, you have, let's have, you know, you're gonna have your kids and grandkids and, you know, you need, you need some space to have people come over. So I'm, all I'm saying, my only point is that to say that they're adding bedrooms, I don't think they necessarily have like, you know, we can get more kids here. I think it's also like the empty nesters want three bedrooms. I mean, I, I wouldn't want a two bedroom personally if I'm downsizing.
Yeah, it feels a little small if you're.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you're gonna have grandkids and stuff in these spaces.
Well, that's, yeah, exactly. What's the expected, what's the expected tax benefit to go from two to three bedroom?
I don't know, do we, do we have those stats? I recall whether or not we had those.
You can ask them.
Yeah, I'd like to know, I mean, whatever it gets offset by, but, you know, the dollars are important too. So there's a benefit to town through that, whether that's a.
Yep, I think that's a valid concern at the town, what you look at.
Tell you the good thing about this evening, you don't have to make any decisions.
I'm just asking questions.
Right, and as we get this, these questions out, it gives time to get responses to them before you get to the point where you have to make decisions. It's nice really just to alert you of what the subject matters are that you're being asked to consider and then get the input and get whatever information you're gonna need.
The three, you're right, that's a good point. The three bedrooms are definitely gonna be taxed higher.
Yeah, certainly.
These are fee simples.
Yes.
They can be taxed higher than a two bedroom, that's for sure.
Yeah, my, my question should not be perceived as me opposing you out of the gate at all. I'm just asking the question just so you're an open, ready and listening. I just really don't know the answer, so I want to find out.
Yep.
Okay, moving on, item seven in my memo is demolition of the gate of the guest house. As was approved in the MFPD, PDCP, the guest house was to be preserved. The applicant is now proposing to demolish the guest house. So that is a change that will need to be made in the MFPD, PDCP.
A little background also, so Gray Williams wanted a tour and I was able to set that up with David Walsh and he had that tour like a month ago with Will Wedge as well was there. He was part of the Starbuck Society and, I mean, a landmark, whatever it's called to me. And then I spoke to Gray today and I said, are you sending us a report? And he said, yeah, I plan on sending a report. And I said, okay, great, I need it by Monday. So he's working on it. But I think he's, I mean, Dave Walsh was there, I shouldn't speak for Dave, but Dave was there and I think the report is gonna ask for preservation. I think we might assume that's what we're gonna get from Gray Williams.
Well, the Planning Board had left it with the applicant that they were gonna conduct a study of the historical significance of the building. They asked the applicant to provide that.
And Gray is, they asked the applicant to provide that.
Yeah.
Yes.
But Gray's also gonna be providing.
I mean, not only the historical condition, but if it's, if it's really poor as they say, I mean, we can preserve something that's.
We, I think they've done the documentation on the structural condition of it. It's more the historical significance that's. And then whatever decision you're gonna make, it's gonna have to be supported. You know, it's gonna be a revision to seeker findings, so you're gonna have to support it if you change it. So that's why these studies are important to have in the record.
Well, is it structurally, do we know if it's structurally sound along those lines? I mean.
Um, depends on who you talk to. Felix doesn't think so. I know you'll, you'll be surprised by that, but.
By the way, if you get a real answer, it turns out to cost.
Do we need to get like a home inspector out there or somebody? It's not our property.
Well, if we ask them to preserve it, they have to preserve it.
Yeah.
They're gonna have to make a decision.
It was kind of a curve because it wasn't really addressed that clearly in the finding statements. And when we got our applications, exactly, and when we got ours, all of a sudden we got the structural stuff, these reports that says it's a terrible condition, it's gotta be knocked down. We said, poof, that makes good sense. And they wanted to build something else. And then at the very end of everything, we got the letter from Gray saying, what are you guys doing? This is supposed to be preserved. And that really threw a monkey wrench in things.
So I think the historical report really needs to, we need that in order to really understand.
Have you gotten a date from the applicant, when we can expect it? No?
No.
I think it's certainly very, very important, but in fairness to the applicant too, if it's objectively is decrepit, I'm not saying that it is, in fairness too. So I think it's certainly a balance. They shouldn't have to.
But they could fix it.
But again, I don't know, we have to see what it is.
What would they fix it for? I mean, how would they use the property?
It's a good question.
If we save the structure, but then it's dilapidated and, and the apartment, they have no.
What's the purpose of this?
The applicant has identified the area of the guest house as their clubhouse for the town home development, so.
Right. Right. That's the alternate use on the same, but if they, if they preserve the guest house.
No.
They would still use it as a, that is the area where they're proposing a clubhouse.
That is.
So whether or not it is standing and they would refurbish it.
Oh, so they would refurbish it and it would be.
Probably, yeah.
Or use it, repurpose the existing structure.
You could make it look the same.
Yeah.
Then you preserve some of the historical stuff, maybe.
Oh, we'll just get the information.
This is the historical. I'm moving on, number eight, the Chapel Performing Arts.
You can't use, you can't have more than 90 pounds of use.
With my level of skill, you can't use the rowing machine.
Yeah, excuse it, gentlemen.
I'm reaching out to the building, man.
Item eight in my review memo is the Chapel Performing Arts Center Boundary. We've gone back and forth for a long time on the boundary. The, the most recent communications were discussions that were provided to the applicant on April 18th with, regarding two boundary layouts. And the town had selected one boundary layout and then we had a list of requests that went along with that boundary. The applicant responded to the letter saying that, that they're willing to accept the town's preference in regards to the boundary, but they were silent regarding the requests that went along with that boundary. And they have, they submitted that information to the Planning Board. So they're in need of submitting a formal response to the town board because it is an issue that you're grappling with and we're waiting for that. But they have not addressed the request that the town board, that the town had asked for in relation to that alternative. In addition, the auditorium use has to be added to the permissible uses within the MFPD. In addition, the auditorium use has to be added to the permissible uses within the MFPD zoning district. So is that, that request is really too bold.
So we're gonna have the parking for the uh act be handed uh in terms of zoning? And then, you know, how will that happen? Because obviously, we're gonna use some of the retail parking.
Well, and that's part of the uh, the list of requests that the town had made to the applicant involve parking, handicapped access, things of that nature.
Okay. Okay.
Uh minimization or removal of the berm, that significant berm in front of the building that sort of block, that doesn't sort of, that blocks access to the parking lot. Um, and right now, the only handicapped. Parking is, yeah, not accessible.
Yeah, so so that's, that that boundary approval had all of those questions. And you know, the town was waiting for answers before it could really agree to that boundary.
Although I think Felix in our last meeting had said that he was gonna get rid of that berm. Having nothing to do with the boundaries, that that was kind of separate, that he was gonna do that anyway.
Right.
Well, that would be great because the the side, as you know, not even the sidewalk from the parking area extends to the roadway that would allow someone to access.
Yeah.
But I just think that there needs to be follow up regarding the questions we asked, so the town could understand how it would function in relation to.
And there's supposed to be a cut through.
Yep.
Being approved and listed as an approved use within that zoning district. Um, my item nine is kind of a, I don't wanna say catchall, but these are um. Changes to the MFPDCDP. That are being proposed by the applicant that will be reflected in the layout of the East Village. And I did a list A through J. Um, which the planning board has been discussing with the applicant. Um, just to give you a sense of the changes. And you know, I can go through each one of those or you can read them on your own, but there's a whole host of issues. That based on the applicant's site plan for the East Village. That are causing reconsideration of these elements of the original preliminary development concept plan. The length of the driveways, driveway aprons, the width of roadways, you know, there's a list here. Um, that just relates to changes in relation to the work that had been approved previously that will need to be amended.
So let me just, some of these I know that are coming from the planning board also. Like, I mean, for example, you know, you have like this loop road. I mean, yes, the applicant is technically asking for it, but you know, they don't wanna do the loop, they don't wanna make changes to loop roads. I think it needs to be. Uh, maybe you could give us some guidance about which ones are actually being sort of, are they coming from the planning board or sort of working with them?
Well, I I. Um, everything, of course, is coming from the applicant and that is, of course, the planning board's responses to them and trying to crystallize the issues. So that you know exactly what they are. So the length of town home driveways and driveway aprons has actually been a fairly controversial issue for us on the planning board. The proposal had been, as originally proposed, was what fifteen to twenty feet each on general the driveways. Now, uh, these are very short driveways. They're proposed to be eight feet. Uh, eight to maybe thirteen feet, I believe. Um, so the 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 thinking had been, uh, the applicant's.
How do you even?
Position had been that uh, that was preferred because this way there wouldn't be people parking in driveways. Really what might be driving this is that the size of the homes, the footprints actually increased and therefore. There was less room for driveway unless you change around the alignment. We've seen an alternative, a couple of alternatives that they proposed and we haven't really. Looked at that in any kind of real detail because it's just senseless to waste their money until you guys really have a good feel as to what we're going to do. So the issue of ti- uh, the the town home driveways and driveway aprons, what does it mean? It means when you have shorter driveways like this, first of all, getting into the driveway. Uh, people will have to cross into the other lane before they turn in.
Turning right is.
Uh, does that matter? Probably in these little back roads, it shouldn't matter because my my goodness, I think the speed limit's gonna be fifteen or twenty miles an hour, so it should be fine. Um, but um, the width of the roadways, um, they're gonna be more narrow. Again, looking more like alleys instead of roads. I think they're gonna be twenty feet. We went through a great deal of um, detailed with the fire department in terms of what would happen with their outriggers on their equipment. Uh, we are satisfied that in good weather, we have enough feet uh on either side. Uh, the issue about snow and what happens when we have snow and when snow is plowed on the sides. We're waiting for a snow removal plan also from the applicant because we think that's critical.
I'm sorry, Bob. It's going from twenty four to twenty?
What's that?
The width of the road?
I think it was, yeah, from twenty four to twenty. Uh, these alleys.
The alleyway, so there's made road.
I just understood. I thought it was going the opposite direction.
No, they're more narrow for, yes. And it's actually, I think, it would be.
More narrow.
Is it eighteen feet and then two feet on each side?
Sixteen and eight.
Correct.
This is what the fire people said was, you know, minimally acceptable.
Exactly. So.
Is there power of parking on each side?
Well, it depends. There's some parking, there are gonna be designated parking areas and there's gonna be some, you know, uh, there's no room for parking on the road themselves, but there'll be designated parking areas on the side of the roadways. So our concern has been, again, uh, do we have enough width for emergency services? Uh, fire department's now satisfied that if they come in there, they can get their outriggers, they can do their their ladders, et cetera, and get in there. If you have, if people parked incorrectly, it's gonna be a problem. If you have snow in there, it could be a problem. Um, so. Our issue with some of us, I I I can't represent this as universally supportive. In fact, Greg, I think, is here on the on the planning board.
With no consensus, yeah.
And I think his his view is probably different. Um, there is a view that the driveways are too short and that it would be preferable to have driveways that are longer that people can. Visitors can pull into someone's house and stay on the driveway. At eight feet, you can't do it. Um, and and mind you, the eight feet is also using the sidewalk, you know, that you walk there. So it's very, very tight.
Right. A lot of the car will hang out over the sidewalk.
Um, I I I raised the issue that in addition to that, initially, the the garages that were being proposed were were. Unrealistically narrow, uh, so that you couldn't fit two decent sized cars in there and open the doors. I mean, if you put them in, we can't get out. Um, and so even that, we're pushing a little bit more on because, again, the idea is if you're, if you can't use the driveways, then you've got to get cars inside. Just in terms of the way people use cars, get in, you know, groceries, et cetera, take kids in and out, that kind of stuff, visitors. Uh, so that's that's an issue. Uh, the alignment of the loop roadway, um, I don't think that's a major issue. I think we have a couple of issues in terms of how those cuts work and the double loop. Um, I I, as far as I understand, the applicant has already submitted plans showing us that the berm is going to be fully removed. In front of the auditorium. We've been working on that for months. I don't think that's an issue anymore. Uh, there's an issue about a second loop going into the parking lot to the north, which some of us think is preferable. Both for exit as well as just for looping around, dropping people off and getting a different way to get into the parking area.
Just to look out there, running into the traffic.
Uh, it seems to make sense to us. Increase in that square footage, I I think of it by itself, it doesn't really necessarily mean anything other than it probably is impacting the size of these driveways. And therefore the roads and the alignment of the road. So it's, and again, it's being driven by market conditions. I think Sabrina's asked a number of times for trying to get some information as to. You know, what what is it really that we're talking about on market conditions? Again, this is proprietary to a certain extent.
And that's what's driving the acreage increase?
It's all part of it. That's part of it.
I I also think too, you know, when when we talk about requests of the planning board regarding the loop road. Making the changes to the loop road also reduces the um requirement, the handling of the fill. That is being generated on site because they can repurpose the fill that's being excavated, the cut, and fill it on site. So that also helps balance the applicant's costs in regards to trucking that excess fill off site. So that's all what the planning board is considering when we're talking about reshaping the earth to make it um more accessible from. The usability standpoint, somebody driving on that road versus trucks coming off that road carrying fill that would not be otherwise perfectly purposed on the site. I also, I, you know, there there seems to be some confusion and I wanna back up a little bit about the roadway. The approved MFPDCPDCP proposed a width of twenty feet for all interior roadways in in the site. A twenty foot width with nine foot wide parallel parking spaces along the main access drive. The current application is proposing a twenty four foot width for all roads and common service drives with an eight foot width on parallel parking spaces along the main access drives. What Bob is referring to is shrinking the alleyways are the small service roads that come off those access roadways. And and those service roads are of a certain distance combined with the driveway apron that is very tight. Without having any driveways and pulling right into garages. So you have to imagine that the expectation here. There is no parking within an alleyway and these are the alleyways that go in between the units to access the units. The cars pull into the garage. You cannot leave a car in the in the the driveways or the aprons are not long enough to park a car in the apron. And you cannot part the park them in the access roadway that gets you to your driveway apron. Okay? The service roads are, have been widened or the 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 common roadways, the main access drive and the main service drives. Have been widened to accommodate the fire service equipment. Okay, that's very important to me.
How many houses are all in alley?
I don't know the numbers. I'll just tell my head.
More than two?
Yes.
That's almost over four hundred and two.
Bob, what did you say? The square foot, you're saying, but you're not saying anything. Uh, the square footage of each unit is increased by approximately three hundred eighty three square feet.
Right.
Uh, and I'm sorry, I don't I don't know if you answered this, but where where did, where is that? And does that include the basement?
Yes, that's the, it's the footprint that's increased by this three hundred feet, right?
Yes.
Yes, it's a footprint. So you have uh two floors, so actually the size is gonna be increased anywhere from five, six hundred feet, including basement. Now, the basement issue, which is one that's listed here by uh.
I'm sorry, say it again. So by increasing it three hundred eighty three, three hundred two hundred square feet, the footprint.
It's a footprint increase.
So it did not include the basement?
It's an overall footprint that experienced.
Okay. It's not a square footage of the.
What does that mean, right, in terms of square footage? What does that translate into? And then that second question, to clarify, has been asked. I'm sorry, does that include the basement? If not, what is the basement in terms of square footage?
It includes the basement, but it also includes the garage as part of that footprint. So there's a two car garage with every one of these units. But I don't think there's a set figure that you can say because there are different kinds of designs. There are step up designs and other kinds of designs. So it doesn't. Necessarily uh result in a one to one increase in square footage of interior living space. But the footprint, which is what we really look at in terms of impacts to, you know.
The site.
The site and stormwater and drainage and this kind of stuff is increased. Uh, again, it might mean only two hundred square feet of additional living space. It might be, depending upon the design, if it's really gonna be two floors over and uh, might be a little bit more than three hundred.
So so because if you have a finished usable basement, whether or not there's a deed restriction. I I don't think as much as I think everyone's honest in the town of Newcastle that everyone who does work in their house files it. So I think we're naive to think that, oh, okay, because there's a deed restriction, no one's gonna make that a livable space. Also, there's just a, and again, just because of competition to other three unit homes. I I want to be able to visualize what that means. If someone can be able to have a two hundred fifty square foot basement, well, it's not huge by any stretch, but. You know, does that become a bedroom? Could they, could they, what can they do there? When I say it comes together, I know it can't become a bedroom.
Right.
But it it has some marketability and therefore challenges the stock that's already there. So I just, I'd like to know what that really means in practical sense.
Well, we should, we can get that. I I think we should get that from the applicant, but I I think you should understand that uh, in terms of history. Basements were not really anticipated the first time around. It was gonna be on slabs. So this is, we thought this was a pretty big uh change. And it really had a tremendous impact on cut and fill and what was gonna happen in terms of soils on 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 site. Um, we, the applicant has offered this deed restriction in terms of an HOA restriction in terms of building out the basement for additional bedrooms. It's been a real concern. We've really asked as much as we can to get the whatever prohibitions and protections we can. Ultimately, you guys are gonna have to make that decision as to whether or not it's okay. We tried to frame the question as best as we could and get as many um. Variables out there for you to consider. And the applicant has really worked with us very carefully on this and and very well. And so now it ultimately comes to you guys and you have to make that decision. Now, the change in the basements. Has been the result of two things uh for the applicant. First, marketing. Which is really your point, your concern. And then secondly, because of some design changes because we've we've asked them. On some of the frontage and some of the streets to make it more level, make it more walkable. And so they said we had to come back and change the garages and then we did that. We may as well make a a basement as well. And basements sell better. So everyone wants a basement. And we have nothing that says that they can't or don't. And that seems to be fairly common. On the other hand, for example, going back to the driveway issue, we've asked uh. From the applicant from Toll Brothers to show us where they've done this before with such short uh driveways. And I think they gave us one from Pennsylvania, one in Virginia, but nothing around here. They have lots of developments around here. Bottom line is this would be very, very unique in our immediate area. And we think it might be very unique in our weather climate. Now, we saw lots of pictures of palm trees and we do this all the time in California, but in Florida, we have a different situation here. And we have, you know, we're really concerned about the weather.
Which is why that storm removal plan becomes ever more.
Yeah, really important. So that's the, yeah, that's the footprints, et cetera. Disturbance from nineteen to twenty one acres, that's really the same sort of arithmetic that we're talking about before from thirty point five to thirty two. Um, it's really tautology, same thing. Increase in impervious surfaces, that's the result of these these various changes. But a lot of that, I think, is really the the homes, right? The increase in the size of homes.
That's a, that's a significant update, that's a significant change to impervious.
All I can tell you is that all with those changes in the impervious surfaces, the engineers have worked through it so that they've come up with solutions for, you know, uh, surface runoff and treatments. So it's, you know, it it's not that they just do this. The applicant has worked very carefully, more than the engineering folks and and, you know, they've come up with solutions. You still have to make that decision as to whether or not you like that, but they've really come up with, you know, appropriate solutions.
And to the benefit to the town as opposed to the detriment, you know, we talk about the basement again. I'm sorry to go back to that, adding the square footage. That potentially also increases tax revenue. So I think those are important numbers.
Well, I think if it's unapproved basement, I I think.
Well, not necessarily finished. I would assume though, may I may I'm wrong, we can ask Josh. I guess you'd be the best person to ask. If you have. Whether you can make a whole uh living space to to sleep at night as opposed to completion.
It's pretty unapproved, right?
Can I just?
It would help you, it would be beneficial to the town.
Just the point of information, the two point nine five acres to eight point six is existing. To what's the change? We'll get you the information of what's changed by the change to these, this isn't apples to apples of what you're looking at. So. This is just the change in the zoning code from what the zoning was to where this is going, but it's not because we changed the basements that it led to this enormous change. So I'll.
Yeah.
I just I just wanted to point that out. You said it's pretty significant. It's not, it's not nearly insignificant.
It's a change from what exists out there now to what you're proposing.
It's what we're proposing, but not from the change that we're making.
From the original proposal to the new proposal.
It's much less of what was.
And so you should provide that number.
Yes, we will, we will.
A head or a basement is still gonna be impervious, I mean, with.
Right.
Are we gonna be able to see a proposed site plan?
Just the more fill.
Yeah, should be submitted as part of the.
Ample supply of them.
And by the way, we talk about, Jeremy, I think you're right for focusing on.
Can I request one?
The taxes, but also, you know, we hear about marketing and, you know, obviously, we all think, well, this is what Toll wants. They wanna sell a lot of the units and that's my reaction too. At the same time, if they want taxes from it, they have to be sold. Um, you know, that's how you get the taxes. It's when they're sold. You don't get taxes when they're sitting there vacant. I mean, you get some taxes from it.
So so. But I I just, I wanna say though, to that point, um, yes, and I think we do need to consider what the market realities are and we don't want them to sit there vacant. But some of these issues concern me more than others. So the length of the driveways and the width of those alleyway roads and the ability for. Our first responders to be able to access um the town homes. Those two concerns are are not market. Realities or or whatnot. They're safety concerns. And so I think that those two rise up for me and I'm gonna want. A better explanation and a pictorial representation of what we're talking about.
I I don't, I don't disagree. I'm just saying that some of these things about better from marketing just isn't somewhat of a benefit to us too as far as they get sold.
More tax dollars is better, period. At least on that issue, I mean, not.
But that's a separate issue from the driveways. I'm concerned about that as well. And the first responders, of course, is a separate issue, so.
Yep. Um, there are a couple of the real minor things. There are really engineering, uh, this will be your engineering department and uh, public works. Public works would really prefer to loop and connect water mains with Cowden Lane. The applicant's not interested in doing it because it would be expensive. But it really is a preferred um uh method. Um, there is this ongoing thing. John is here tonight. Uh, we have this ongoing concern with regard to the employees walking down Route one seventeen at dark. We're gonna have more darkness now and we've been talking about this since last December. That's a real concern in terms of how that gets treated. Uh, pleased to to tell you that even though these alleyways are very narrow. School buses will not be going down there. We talked to Chapel Quon Transit, so it'll be going around the spine road, so we don't have that concern. So that worked out very well. And again, the applicant worked with the uh, the school bus company uh to work that out.
So, you know, these are, it's just kind of rundown of all of the issues, some of the flavor of what the planning board is working with and maybe Les, you can go through some of the the major points in that timeframe. Um, just to kind of give you a sense of when you make decisions and what needs to happen. Because there's a lot of pressure to get this done quickly and there's certain things that we cannot rush because they're required through. Legislative processes to be here to. and there's certain things that we cannot rush because they're required through legislative processes to be here to.
So fast. Well, I was gonna say first that the the purpose of tonight, I think, has been satisfied, I think we've given you a heads up as to what issues you're gonna have to consider as we go to the joint meeting and beyond. Um, and I think that's helpful to understand that at this stage of the process, the preliminary development concept plan that you'll approve will be essentially the plan that the planning board will ultimately approve because of the timing. And so um that's kind of what they're waiting to see is, you know, to get the feel through the town boards uh feeling on these outstanding issues, so uh at this point, the the planning board is basically waiting to hear from the town board. Um, with respect to the timing of some of these things, most of these zoning amendments have provisions for referrals to the planning board and public hearings, referrals to the county planning board, they all entail time until those things are done. Public hearings, seeker findings, and they kind of attach to all of these. Now, yes, I know Rob's gonna ask can be done simultaneously, yes, some of them can, there's no question about it, but they all involve time in terms of getting all these procedural requirements satisfied.
I was just, I was just gonna say that, I mean, it would be helpful to a certain extent. I know like we had these uh matrices or whatever, you know, some sort of chart, a spreadsheet.
Right.
When we've, you know, dealt with these sort of complicated approvals in the past. And I was thinking it would be helpful if we had some of these things and and sort of know the, I mean, assuming there's a consensus from the planning board to know the planning board's opinion on some of these things.
Absolutely.
And you know, what's what's sort of being driven by the planning, I understand the applicant's the one who's, you know, requesting all these things, but some of these things the planning board might be like, yes, that's definitely something that's better for this plan of this.
I think that's the benefit of next week's meeting, to get, there's a, there's, in some of these things, I think there's a consensus and some of them they're not. So you'll hear from the very members.
Maybe you can just find out which ones are consensus.
Yeah, could we, and I think it would be helpful to drive the.
Yeah, I agree with Rob on that, some of the things we just have to rely on your experience.
And along with that, we really need to see the site plan because we're kind of asked to make decisions actually on something we've never even seen.
Well, you need a detailed, you need the detailed petition.
You need a detailed petition, you need the site plan, you need a lot of information.
Yeah, all that is to come in with your petition, the petition to you so that you can fully vet the issues.
I just think it'd be helpful if we knew in advance what, where there's consensus on the planning board, so we sort of know which is the one, which are the ones that are sort of more uh hot-button type of issues.
I think Bob has already indicated what they are.
Yeah, I think um the ones that I think that are controversial, and Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the uh the location and the boundary of the auditorium, where we've looked at it, we've looked at the various alternatives. They're fairly neutral, there are positives and negatives with each ones. Uh, one issue that keeps popping up is, you know, proximity of the of the new homes to the pack in terms of noise. The applicant seems to be neutral on this, but we all live here and then we also live with complaints later on from from household developers. And that's an issue, so we need to.
So.
I know they moved to.
Right, at the latest reiteration, um, one of the things that we had requested from the applicant was for um the the closest cluster of homes to be relocated because we too were very concerned about the ongoing noise complaints. And, you know, you can, you can tell a prospective purchaser that from now till doomsday, until they're, you know, awoken and they're inconvenienced by, you know, people leaving an auditorium at eleven o'clock at night. You know, and and, you know, it's 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 an undue burden on our police department, we have unhappy residents, it's it's unfair to them.
Sorry, it's on the latest iteration, they've made some movement in that in that area.
So I I am curious as to where the remaining buildings, how far the remaining buildings. Yeah, I know with option two, they were moving two of those buildings, I don't know if they were moving all four. There were four, I think they moved two, they didn't wanna move all around. That's the last item, but I'd like to see something move.
But I think the ones that are controversial really deal with the uh uh size of the footprint because of the impacts that flow from that. And that really leads to, I think, we haven't seen this removal plan yet, but that really leads to this issue about, you know, the garages and the driveways and the parking. Uh, some of us think that even the designated parking is attenuated from the actual units and is almost unrealistic. In bad weather, I mean, it's great in the palm trees, but it's it's a little bit tougher. So those are the areas I think that there is some mix. And to give credit to um the the folks who think it's perfectly fine, this whole development was designed to be more of a walking, small community, to give a different feel and to make the pedestrian primary, not the not the vehicles. So, you know, we're dealing with that, I I think there's a great deal of intelligence on that argument on the other side, so we really have to balance it. We, you know, we're probably three-two, I'm not quite sure where the three-two is. Maybe you're familiar with it, I don't know.
Well, like when you say impervious surface, I mean, you're asking, if you ask them to make the driveways wider, whether alleyways and you're increasing the impervious surface.
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's a negative thing.
No, in that case, it would be very problematic for safety, it prompts.
It's about a balance.
It's a balance.
Right, of course it is, of course.
Wetlands, wetland buffers, they've they've shown us an alternative, alternatives that makes the roadways push out, we can get the lower driveways, maybe in some cases, not all cases. So it's it's a weighing of these, you know, then we.
Just just curious Nick, and once you get a grasp, Nick, on the impervious issue, um, impervious issue. Uh, is part of that required or? I'm sorry, never mind, we'll figure it out once this later.
I think to the supervisor's point, and we've had this being helpful in the past, if we create some type of chart that lists each of these issues, what the um the request is, the ask is, what a position the planning board is, if it's known, what information the applicant still needs to provide on that issue, maybe a summary of the outstanding issues. I think we've sort of had seen that before in spreadsheet formats, it's helpful to guide the discussions, otherwise, we tend to go off the tracks.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can have that done for before next week, because I don't think talking about it, but certainly I think as a result of next week's meeting, I think we should put that together Yeah, that's fair. and get the information from the applicant, hopefully we'll have the updated petition by next week and go from that.
But I think you'll hear in next week's meeting what items are and where there's still not consensus, and you'll hear both sides arguing for it's pro and con.
Wasn't there an issue about raising the the loop road? I know, the word loop is in here, but it's not the same.
No, but I think that's been resolved, the applicant's willing to do it, I think uh in general, the applicants, uh planners and engineers uh agree it can be done. It's um and it actually helps them in terms of cut and fill and driving off extra soil from the the site and who wants to see seven other truckloads of stuff going through our our town. So it really, on balance, I think it helps, I think it is is. And they're on board.
Does that affect the berm, does that make the berm smaller by raising the?
My understanding, the berm is, the berm goes anyway, no matter what, that's the application, uh as I understand it, and part of that soil will go, you know, uh to that to that fill uh of the roadway from the berm, so it's it's easy to just push it down.
And there's gonna be a cut through the berm so people can walk from the parking lot?
We think there should be, some of us think there should be two, two cuts.
Even then.
Okay, one for driving and one for pedestrians.
Uh, one, two, actually three, one for pedestrians and two for driving.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Maybe you just can't, pedestrian.
Pedestrians can always take that.
Come on, if it's flat, if it's flat, you can just walk on the grass, what is that big berm?
I've answered that, but yeah.
All right, it's all right.
Yeah, we want it to be substantial.
We can see you uh next week, can't wait.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
I mean, this is serving. Let's sit here, though. Hi, Greg. Thanks, Bob, thank you very much.
Take care, guys.
So we're gonna have a motion to go into executive session, um, we need aid.
Well, favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Very nice.
For for our fans at home, do not adjust your TV set, this is the right side of the room, things are not backwards.
Oh my goodness, we, you know, clearly we have to rotate.
We have some interlopers, we have some interlopers, Jill Shapiro, Nick, Ward Willis, oh, you're going backwards. Now I feel bad.
I know, you doubt it.
No, I try, I don't.
It really would throw everything off.
I'm gonna come on the side of goodness and, oh, please.
With all, with all due respect.
Right?
Although, although you're the wrong color, let me check to see.
It's coming, it's coming.
It's coming. Oh, Johnson, now all's good in the world, alright, let's go.
Double call, let's go.
Hold you up.
We turn that thing on?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Lock it on.
Yeah, we're all. We're all in for this whole thing, yes.
Double call discussion.
Um, so, we are, um, we started this discussion last week, Nick is not here, so we decided we'd be carrying over just so that you could be a uh beneficiary. Um, so, make a long story short, we actually um got copies of the engines list from Verizon and we were able to figure out that um out of the three hundred and eight double polls that engines has listed within town, the overwhelming majority, two hundred and sixty-something, are actually Verizon's. Um, yeah, despite uh Con Ed's protestations last time, they have like thirty. Um, and they would of course be the first ones off the poll. The other thing that was of interest is is that when when we organized the Excel sheet by street name, um because you had cautioned us that uh our legislation would only be able to.
A long.
Applicable to our local streets. Um, the overwhelming majority of them were in fact town roads. So, uh, you know, the the value of the legislation is gonna be pretty significant to us. The other thing that we talked about was perhaps approaching the county and seeing whether or not the county would consider similar legislation.
Right.
So we would have the benefit of both county and local roads. So, um.
I think we 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 maybe write a a letter to the county once we have ours, even though we have to wait, but.
Giving them a draft and asking them if they would consider similar legislation, that it would be helpful.
Yeah.
And when we first discussed this probably two years ago, there was also a discussion as to whether, and that's one reason we held off, was whether the um municipalities were preempted because the state had just started its engines program and it's been subsequently confirmed now through with the PSC that you're, we're not preempting, we have the full authority to protect the town's driveways and atop such a local law.
Now, it it you, you, I don't know, was it you who did the research or your office did the research? But um, I don't know if we're jumping ahead, but there was some, was it Hempstead or somewhere, I apologize, that 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 they stuck it to the, in terms of liability and responsibility and paying the penalty to the last off the poll. As opposed to.
Right, right, the poll owner.
The poll owner.
Yeah, how should we do that?
Because the last is supposed to take it down.
Right, so.
Well, no, not necessarily, so sometimes Con Ed owns the poll, but Verizon would be the last off, so Con Ed couldn't remove it unless Verizon.
Can we make it jointly several, make it jointly several liable for those lawyer, non-lawyers here?
That's what I'm thinking, with.
Yeah, and maybe that's why Con Ed.
Let's jointly several liable. Stay on your own side.
I think all this is splintering. See if you're welcome on your side.
That's right. So we make it jointly and several liable, um, because that'll put the onus on the owner to to really push the last, you know, make sure it gets done. And done the right way.
Right.
So kind of a hybrid.
Yeah, 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 I think that's a good idea, so we'll revise it, so next step would be.
Set it down for public hearing, once we have Verizon's.
Yep, introduce work, schedule for public hearing.
Yeah, and and, you know, just of note, so the engines list is purely voluntary. Um, the last uh person on the poll has thirty days within which to uh remove the poll. And as we suspected, there are polls on this list where the last entity has been on it for a year.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, although we we certainly appreciate and we applaud the Public Service Commission for creating this list, um, without any teeth to it, um, it doesn't, only does half the job. And I have to tell you that when we did our accounting of double polls, we actually came up with significantly higher numbers than was on the list. But eve- even giving them the benefit of the doubt, there are polls on here that are listed under Verizon waiting to come off that have been on here over a year. So.
Hopefully so spur of the moment.
Okay, well, that's great.
So we'll make that revision and then you get right to your next uh.
Yeah, so we can go on for the next. Yeah, so we can set it down for a public hearing on authorization to set up. Great, that would be the. Um, the next is authorization to replace the fire alarm system in uh Town Hall. Yeah, we need a fire alarm system.
Let's do it.
Okay, great. Uh, we have a wireless one in place at the moment, which is working great as a temporary and we'll fix it up in a given year. Uh, the next was the compostable leaf bags, we talked about that last time.
Right.
Uh, the next was, uh, we hope, we we presented the board with a f- a a final um RFP for snow removal.
Looks good.
We've incorporated all the comments in it, and uh so we're going to issue it and we're hoping to have it back October eleventh, so we're hoping that we will.
Tomorrow?
Yeah.
Well, it's the season, they're gonna have to.
Yeah, we're gonna need to do this because we really, we need to know um how we're gonna handle snow removal going forward and.
When are we gonna issue, tomorrow?
Um. It's by the end of the week, so I may have done it for Friday.
Yeah, Friday to twenty.
Yeah, Friday to twenty. Okay, um, we need authorization to go out to bid recreation, we'd like uh to run some ski trips over the nature. Um, goals and objections, put it back in, just because.
Yeah. So we can say this, we're talking about it next time.
It's so late, it's so late.
We've done that for that, I think, for how many times?
You know, just for goodness, I just want you to know.
Public.
You mind?
Yeah, we have.
Public comment.
Public comment, I wanna hear from John, I can't, I can't delay it anymore.
Alright, fine. Did you put video?
Yeah.
Oh, it's in the exact, that's right, sorry. Alright, just begins. Does anybody have any questions, otherwise we'll let it stand. Fine.
I don't have any questions.
Okay, you raise all the.
Yeah, no.
No, but did, I'll, I'll ask you off calendar, uh offline or.
Yeah, alright, alright, yep. That's the way, I do have to, um.
Alright, is that it?
So then we have some resolutions.
Well, no, no, I already said that, but that's. Alright, so.
What about the change order thirty-one, we talk about that or no?
We, did we just discuss?
No, 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 thirty thirty-one is the, um, it's it's a ten thousand dollar change order, it's for uh um uh site work along the edge of the the left field where they have.
Oh, yeah.
Great.
Yeah, to get around the trees and put the retaining walls in and seed it and grade it. Um, yeah, ELQ did that, again, this is one of those things that that we've talked about, we approved it, but we just never actually got the the paper on it, so. In order to be included on the next payment, page number.
Got it.
Alright? Do you want to go shoot?
Any questions?
Not, okay, fine.
I move to approve the payment of claims that my board will need to pay, three thousand, seven hundred dollars listed on the sorry pre-check writing report in detail about each report each created September seventeenth of what this great fabulous year. Checks will be issued in May, each claim that lists on the ones is covered eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Well, favor.
Hi.
I move to approve uh ELQ change order thirty-one for the required additional work. Excuse me, ended along the easterly ballfield slope which included installation of one wood tie tree well and erosion control mat and stone for a total amount of ten thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-four shekels.
Second.
Well, favor.
I have to authorize the appointment of Carlos Ramirez, the former Manhattan Assistant District Attorney, the position of town prosecutor at a rate of six thousand annually. Is that?
That's it.
That's what it was, I thought it was less.
It was less, they, some, some.
You give them a raise?
I don't know why, but.
Can I get a retroactive raise?
Oh, really? I just say that like, you make a big block down.
September.
They have to work with everybody.
From six years ago, I think it was.
Our interns average more than we do.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
It used to be five.
I move to authorize.
When I did it, it was three.
I did it for four, and then it got.
No, you had three of them.
No, it was two.
Did you guys decide to uh split the ten?
Two.
Two, then it was, yeah, then it was three, but anyway. I move to authorize probation appointment of Callan Cantrell, some planner developmental, development partner in the department effective September seventeenth. Two thousand nineteen, the probation period for at least sixteen weeks, but no more than fifty-two weeks.
Second. Yay!
I went.
Personal, personal.
Wait, who seconded that?
I did.
I would, I would.
All three of us.
Let's skip around the room.
Well, favor. But didn't we say anything bad?
Yeah, no, really. Alright, I move to authorize, um, someone sitting near me, Laura has gone to attend the New York City State City County Management Association Fall Conference on Thursday, October tenth, two thousand nineteen, to be held at Maris College in the great city of Poughkeepsie, New York for a total attendance cost of fifty dollars.
Second.
And it's like down the.
Favor.
Hi.
Nice.
Nice.
There you go, that, oh, what's up, Poughkeepsie?
Yeah.
Alright, I will go, I authorize, I move to authorize procurement of time and materials from Red Hawk Fire and Security to replace a non-functional fire alarm alarm system at Newcastle Town Hall at a cost not to exceed ninety thousand dollars. It's expensive, but it needs to be done, Red Hawk currently holds the New York State OGS contract for security of facilities, systems and solutions. Planning for this will come from a transfer from our general fund contingency account.
Well, in favor?
Sorry, I was still, I was still silenced by the amount.
Because I see a where, because I see a whereas coming, I'm gonna pass this to my colleague, Mando.
I move to authorize the purchase of twenty-one thousand forty-gallon leaf bags from Ace Bag and Burlac Company in Bronx, New York from the quote dated September fourth, twenty nineteen, at a cost of thirteen thousand eight hundred sixty dollars.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the Recreation and Parks Department to go out to bid for the twenty-twenty coach bus contract. Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Okay, before we do the Ackman one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna record it and I'll send it to them.
Okay.
Take a listen to it.
I'm gonna read the whole thing. Whereas Ronnie P.
Wait, wait, did you swear? Wait, I didn't start yet.
Whereas Ronnie P. Ackman is a former town of Newcastle resident of forty-seven years who made many important and lasting contributions to our community, including perhaps most notably the following. Ms. Ackman led the Upper Harlem Line Commuter Council, a local commuter group, in securing the electrification of the Upper Harlem Line from North White Plains to Brewster, this is for the MTA. As a result of her accomplishment, Governor Mario Cuomo appointed Ms. Ackman to the Board of the MTA, representing the Permanent Citizens Advisory Committee to the MTA for a three-year term. Governor George Pataki reappointed Ms. Ackman to an additional three-year term, which was ultimately extended by eighteen months. The electrification of the Upper Harlem Line substantially reduced running times and allowed Metro North to deploy more modern rail cars, vastly improving the commutation experience for countless riders. Whereas this year, twenty nineteen, marks the thirty-fifth anniversary of the opening of the electrified rail line that Ms. Ackman successfully advocated for and which was completed in nineteen eighty-four. And therefore is fitting time to recognize Ms. Ackman for the major impact she had on improving the rail commutation and quality of life in Chappaqua and Northern Westchester. And whereas Lawrence D. Ackman, donor, and the family of Ms. Ackman wished to donate the labor and materials necessary to create a garden at the Chappaqua train station in her honor as depicted on the plans attached here too. And whereas the town has reviewed said plans for the proposed garden and wishes to accept the offer of donation pursuant to Town Law Section sixty-four eight, subject to the conditions set forth in this resolution, now therefore be resolved that the town board hereby accepts the offer of donation subject to donor satisfying the conditions as set forth in the resolution. And be it further resolved that except as otherwise stated below, all materials used to create the garden, including but not limited to fixtures and or works of art, shall become the sole property of the town of Newcastle upon completion of the project. And be it further resolved that the town of Newcastle shall maintain the plantings established in the garden and keep the area free of rubbish and debris. Be it further resolved, the town of Newcastle is presently unaware of any municipal need that would require the relocation of the garden from the Chappaqua train station, but should such needs arise in the future, the town hereby reserves the right to relocate the garden in its sole discretion upon reasonable notice to donor. In the event of such relocation, the town shall confer with donor and or his family as to a new suitable location for the garden on town-owned Chappaqua train station property, but the final determination as to such new location shall be made solely by the town. Be it further resolved that the town reserves the right to remove the garden in its sole discretion after thirty years from its completion. In the event of such removal, the town will offer to return the donated fixtures and works of art to the donor and or his family. And be it further resolved that the town administrator is authorized to execute any documents required to implement this resolution and such documents as donor may reasonably request to document his donation to the town for federal income tax purposes, subject to review and approval of Town Council. And be it further resolved that the town board wishes to acknowledge and sincerely thank the Ackman family for its generosity. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Last but not least.
I move to authorize the town of Newcastle to issue an RFP for snow removal.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to.
Second. Do we need to authorize the public hearing for the double poll?
We need a, the local law to be revised.
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 Got it.
So we'll authorize it, we're gonna authorize it next week and then we'll set it down for October. It probably isn't gonna be until October twenty-second only because we've got budget.
Oh, that's right.
This meeting and then we've got the.
What are those meetings? Do we have dates and times set for that?
Okay.
Can you say that? Yes, the fifteenth and the sixteenth.
Of October.
Of October. And we're not meeting the week of.
Oh, it's the morning of the sixteenth, the night of the fifteenth morning.
The sixteenth, exactly right, and then we're.
Sorry, just wanted to make sure.
Right. We are not meeting on the week of the first. We are meeting on Monday, this, right.
No, wait, wait.
On October. October second.
Cause it's, right, because it's Rosh Hashanah.
Okay, so we meet on October second.
So what, October second is our date?
Sorry, we're not meeting at all that week.
We're.
October second is not Rosh Hashanah. Isn't that in?
No, October first will be the normal meeting, so you're saying we're meeting October seconds then?
No, no, we're not meeting at all that week, cause we're not meeting that week.
No meeting October first.
Oh, yes, it is.
Yeah, it is.
It is, I'm sorry, it's the second day.
So no meeting the first week in October.
No meeting on Tuesday, October first.
Right, so we're not meeting that first week in October, we're meeting on Monday the seventh. Is that correct?
The hours?
Yes, Monday the seventh because, yeah.
Got it.
Because the eighth and, yeah.
Got it.
Uh, so we'll change the meeting from the eighth to the seventh.
Yes.
And it's.
We're all gonna do the same thing.
Okay, and then the fifteenth is our budget meeting, so that's in the evening, we'll start at six thirty and we'll run.
Right, and the sixteenth in the morning.
And then the sixteenth in the morning, exactly right. Now, normally we do another morning, Lauren, did, did.
Were they sending some, was anyone to send out a, what time is it on the sixteenth?
I think it's like nine twelve or something.
The budget. We had, we had eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve.
That's what's in my calendar at least.
I'm gonna miss the downtown construction meeting.
A Wednesday? Oh, yeah, we all, we all are actually.
The sixteenth.
That would have to change it. But we can't.
Oh, right, well, it's not gonna be that, yeah, so we'll have to kick it over to the Thursday, the seventeenth or something, yeah, no.
Well, of us are concerned. Yeah.
Cause I'm, yeah.
Could be one of our last ones.
Oh, my God. Can you imagine?
Okay, so sorry, eight AM on the sixteenth, is that eight to the AM?
Yeah, we, yeah, that really doesn't mess your schedule, you were already, we knew, we knew she was gonna be here from eight to nine anyways.
Is it already? Okay.
Oh, and actually, yeah, we're gonna have to shift the meeting on the ninth or else maybe Rob, you're all sit down and bring that one, it's the other one.
Go for that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, for that, yeah. So we'll have to figure that one out. Alright, so the public hearing, basically, we're gonna end up setting for the twenty-second was a very long way of saying that.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.